I'm starting to run out of hard disk space. Yeah. Ah, I thought that was a siren for a second.
Is that middle camera up here or?
Nope.
All set?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Okay, open meeting to the public.
I see you've got nothing on the agenda for forty, forty-three Chapman Street. Is there anything planned for that or?
Nothing I'm aware of yet. Tom's not here today.
Uh, he was, he was supposed to write a letter to this guy and, you know, have you heard anything about it?
I spoke to Tom after the last meeting to see if he had heard anything since then. And I sent him a couple emails, but I haven't, I haven't gotten any word back from him. And I, I just have no update.
Going on six months.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Charlene Sample. Of those who don't know me, I'm, I've been a resident of Ross's Point most of my life. Um, I know a lot of you are aware, there's been a large interest in this banner project, the Hometown Hero Banner Project. Myself, um, and a small group of ladies, including Pat, has decided to form a committee, um, on this project. And we would like to get your approval before we begin. Um, I have, we did a lot of research. We created the applications. I'd like to pass out the applications to you guys so you can go over it if you have any questions.
Thank you.
I know this has kind of been a long time coming. A lot of the towns and villages, um, have had great success in this. And I think we're hoping to see the same thing, uh, with your approval. We are, this is a long process. I know a lot of people seemed very anxious up at first and wanted one right away. I've kind of, I created a Facebook page to kind of calm that down a little bit, to say, you know, this is gonna take a while. There's a lot to this, um, a lot of questions, uh, we had to figure out all our, you know, what we were gonna require. Um, we did mimic, I got a lot of applications from many other towns. Um, I work for the town of Shaysie. So, we didn't, the town did not participate, but I was able to get a lot of information from the residents who did. So, that was really helpful. The Village of Champlain, um, I worked with, I talked to Janet a lot. Their application, I thought, was spot on. So, we really did coincide with their application, um, their requirements and stuff. Um, so, that part was pretty, once we got to it, 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 a lot of the towns pretty much required the same thing. We kind of wanted to go with all the other towns and that. Um, so, we would like to start after, as soon as possible after we get your approval, get the applications out. We would have a deadline by the end of the year, initially to start for the next season. Um, the banners would be displayed from May to November each year. I did talk to Jason Juno to see what we had for polls, you know, I don't, it's hard. We don't know the turnout we're gonna get. We hope it's big. We think it's gonna be big. Um, but it's really hard at this point to know, like, are we gonna have to use all forty-nine polls on Lake Street? Do we have to use Maple Street? So, I got numbers and maybe every other poll. It just is gonna depend. Um, we would have to ask your, um, road crew to put them up and take them down each year. Um, but other than that, we are purchasing all the, um, brackets and everything for, yeah, all the hardware needed. So, that would be nothing, um, to the village expense or anything like that. This is completely nonprofit. Um, we've created, we have, I have EIN already. Um, creating a, we're opening a bank account with a couple of us that are gonna be signers, all nonprofit. We're only charging what the banners and brackets are gonna cost. Um, there's been a lot of good, the brackets hold up pretty well. You have a couple that break here or there. So, our intention is to only have your road crew to put up and put down. But if one breaks or whatever, we'd have to ask for their help. Um, that'd be the only other thing. Does anybody have any questions on the application or?
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, I see it's, it's certain, it's gonna be exclusive to military personnel, I'll start. Cause I saw ones up more like firefighters and police officers in other towns.
This is what we, as a, as a committee, this is what we decided. We're open to suggestions, of course. If you wanna open it up, we could look into that.
Okay. Maybe down the line.
Right. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, things can change every year too. We're gonna, you know, the applications are always gonna be ongoing. This will be an ongoing project for sure. Um.
Okay. I think that's a very good idea.
Of course. Yeah, I'm happy to see that we've got a lot of progress on this now.
Yes.
It does say that we'll, that we'll storm for a two-year period. If they want to, they extend that.
It's all gonna depend on what we get for applications. Um, if we have a waiting list, no, I think we have to cut it off at two years. If there's not a waiting list, I'd like to see them up there, you know? If we have the, the polls available, let's leave them up. If the family wants them though back, we, we will decommission and return to the family though. If they only want it up for a couple of years. So, i- if we have a waiting list, like, two years is the deadline, is the, you know, max that. But if not, if they want them up, but they'll wear too. I mean, they're in the summer, so it's not so bad, but those banners where, will wear. So, it, I guess the family, if they want them up longer.
You'd be like, bleach them out, one pair at the end, so they'll.
Oh, right. Yeah, especially being on the lake, you know, we do get that wind too. So, they might wear a little more right along Lake Street.
And they could be put on, um, Champlain Street for eleven coming in.
Yep.
Lake Street.
Yep. I have Lake Street, Champlain Street, Pratt Street if needed. I, I don't wanna go there because we have to go up further, I think. You have the nice, I think you have a nice line of ones. We have to go up further. So, I, I think we're gonna prefer Lake Street to start, then Champlain Street, and then down Maple if Maple's needed.
Yeah. Cause, uh, Lake Street and Champlain Street won't traffic.
Right. Absolutely.
So, you can't pick where you want one?
No. The committee will decide. That's, I have had a couple people, I don't see issues with people. Not if somebody wants one on State Street, no. Um, you know what I mean? We're, we're gonna keep it. But somebody said, "Well, my father used to live here. Can we put it on that pole in front of his house?" I don't see an issue with that. I mean, and it, and as a committee, you know, we, we put it in there because we don't want people to say, "Can you put it on State Street?" You know, so, but other than that, yes. Yeah, other than that, I, I don't see an issue with asking for placement as long as possible. Yep.
Very good. Thank you.
I'll put that in form of a motion so it's official to allow the hometown hero to go forward with their committee and have full cooperation.
Great, thank you.
All hands.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Char, can I give a little talk to this?
Yep, yeah.
Any other problems, Thomas? Yes, thank you. Hi, my name is Natalie Shaver. Yes, I'm part of the Fourth of July Independence Committee. Um, we are requesting permission to do, well, actually I have two requests for two different committees. But the first is for the Independence Day Committee. We raised money all year long to make sure that we have a great kind of Fourth of July. Um, so, we're requesting permission to do a boot drive, um, this Saturday, the twenty-fifth, uh, on Lake Street, um, from nine to three P M. And, uh, they told me I had to come in front of you guys and ask permission. So, that's one reason I'm here. The second reason is, um, I'm also part of the breast cancer committee with, um, Joan Sterling. And the Real Men Wear Pink for October, and we're trying to raise two thousand five hundred dollars per person, which, um, I team, I have three people. And Janet St. John has four people as well. And we're asking permission as well to do a boot drive in October, October ninth, from nine to three P M as well.
You have, uh, street signs that are slow and stuff like that, cones and stuff like that?
We do.
Okay. I make a motion that the committee have the boot drive. All second. All favor?
Aye, aye.
For both?
For both.
For both, yeah.
So, it's twenty-fifth and the night.
Yes.
Do you say, what are we at?
Twenty-fifth September?
Uh, twenty-fifth of September will be for the Fourth of July, Independence Committee. And we'll have the signs up and everything. And on the ninth of October, we'll do the breast cancer awareness for real men. Which I apologize to the host of my hospital, we're running.
Very nice. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay. Looks at the previous meeting. I'll make a motion that the amendment be accepted at the conference. Second. All favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Bills. Any questions on the bills? Any additions or deletions?
No.
Yes, I have a question. On page five. Stafford law, legal services, one thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars. What's in the bill today? It says miscellaneous matters. I mean, can we get a breakdown of what the miscellaneous matters? The people in the audience here have been asking for weeks from Tom Renee for results of different ongoing issues that we have. And the only thing we're getting is miscellaneous matters. I have a problem with that. I'd like to have it broken down. So, at least let us know what's going on. He was gonna be told that tonight if he was here, but unfortunately he's not. Uh, I asked him last week if he was gonna be here and said he wasn't. The second, uh, issue I have is page seven. It is, uh, in the page, a mileage reimbursement for yourself, Mr. Mayor, is six hundred and nine dollars and fifty cents. Cause I drove over to the MEUA tenth conference around car. I didn't take the village car. Don't want to. We have a policy that you have to follow. This is a Ross's Point Village travel policy. It says that if a car is available, you have to use it. You have a copy of this, you voted on. Yeah, I wa, I don't have a copy in front of me. So, as that is noted, I'd like to take that one bill off the list of bills. And I would make a motion to approve the bills without the mileage reimbursement. All second. It simply says encouraged. A personal vehicle may be used. Employees or village representatives are encouraged to use a village vehicle if the appropriate arrangements can be made. A personal vehicle may be used when the village vehicle is not available. But there's no, the village vehicle is not in this garage down there all week. I looked at it all week, every day. But it's also not a requirement when I take it. You have to have, you have to have board approval to travel. That's part of the travel policy. I have board approval to travel to the MEUA conference. Yes, to go to the conference, but not to use your own vehicle. That's part of the rules and regulations that we go by. They're your rules. It just says encouraged. They're your rules, you need to follow them. And why should the village be spending six hundred dollars from gas money or mileage money when we have a village vehicle? We might as well sell the vehicle for another user. That's my point. Why leave the vehicle in, I mean, our son has gone to.
Nikon.
Nikon meeting. Would he take? He took the village vehicle. That's what it's there for. It says encouraged. I just following your policy. You have rules, you gotta follow them. It says encouraged. Well, if it doesn't say must, you bring it up at the next meeting on the full board here and see if you get a re, approval. But what I read is that the village vehicle is there, encouraged to use it. Well, I don't know. Why should the taxpayers have to go above and beyond to pay for something for that, that we don't have to pay for? It just doesn't make any sense. They still have to pay the expenses with village vehicle in terms of maintenance and everything else. It's a hybrid, yeah. What do you think we bought it for? To go on trips. So, I have a motion to say the village accept that one. I was sorry to do that. All favor?
Aye.
Nay. Yes, thank you.
Oh, what about the Stafford bill? Is that being tabled for the next meeting or is that?
No, that can be paid, but I would like to know what, what the matters are about. And that could be forwarded on to Mr. Renee. They don't wanna end up having late charges going there. Okay, that's, any correspondence to that?
No.
I called the assessor for the, uh, revenue way property. I haven't heard back from him, although I did, I did get him on the phone. He just hasn't called me back yet. And I called him today and left an additional message to follow up. We're supposed to have, we're supposed to have, uh, Mr. Rosenbaum, we're supposed to get ahold of you and do the assessment. You have to have an independent. That's the guy I called. Oh. Yeah. I just didn't remember his name. Oh, the, the assessor in Champlain or Rosenbaum is, okay, the one that's. He had a round that? Okay, he's, he's gonna come up for you to properly. Yeah, okay. I don't know what, yeah, uh, what, uh, I don't know when yet. He was busy and he hasn't gone back. No, but at least, I left a message to contact you, cause you have to sign the agreement with him. Yep. To go forward on this problem. Yeah. So, okay. Uh, Champlain, a couple people from the town of Champlain contacted me about a motion to rename the walk bike path to the Harry McManus Trail. Uh, I don't have a resolution for that. But what is the board's thoughts on that? Yeah, if they wanna do that, I don't, they can do that. They're supposed to send us a resolution. Jason Borri said that he was gonna forward a, a resolution. We do have one. It wasn't written up in like art format. It's gotta be rewritten. Oh. I haven't had time to do that yet. And I would ask Susan Friday, so she has time to do that. Do we wanna, like, have a motion on that now or just table it for next meeting? No, I'll make a motion. We, we do that. When you hit the paper door, fill it out. Yeah. Second, sounds good to me. Then we would have to do the resolution with the roll call vote. Yeah. Yeah, sounds good. Okay. All favor?
Aye.
Let's see. Uh, Susan called the sheriff in the state police. Uh, she called to ask if they provide monthly reports, but they haven't returned back, back to Susan yet or not. What else do I have in my file papers here? Uh, one of the things I found out at the MEUA meeting is the, uh, rider that's on the contract we get for our hydro. Yes. Everyone's got a copy of that now. Yeah. This allows us for any company that moves in that does not qualify for New York Power Authority Municipal and/or Rural Competitive Technical Development Program. They have, have to put the bill for all the supplemental they push in, push, uh, push us into in the village. As well as they have to put the bill for any upgrade, upgrades to the system required to serve them safely. They have to put the bill for any up, well, the upgrades, any studies and so on. So, if they wanna move in, we have a rider here that we can use. So, if they can come in, they have to pay for everything. That's really nice.
That's good.
Yep. And that came out, I wish this came out earlier. It's been a rider to the contract since two thousand eighteen. But I didn't find out about it until the end of MEUA.
Yeah.
So, we'll have to figure out how Flatspur has implemented this. And then from there, we can figure out how they implemented it. We could probably implement it here. And I think that'd be a good enough discouragement. Yep. It'll make the cryptocurrency and data mining a little redundant. Should, no. Okay, is there anything else? Dress yarn? Uh, I think we're in anything, uh, I'd like to see the village crew take down the flowers. They're, they look pretty rad and they had flowers last week. So, I'd like to see them taking down. Uh, next thing I've got is, I'd like to have an executive session on a particular person. Second. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that all we got? No. I talked to Mr. Lingkort, uh, Mr. Todd Lingkort from, uh, Fine Street. He called me up and asked me if I go up and look at the driveway, that the village did some damage in the driveway with an echo. And so, I think the village should be paying for his driveway to be, be fixed. So, I called up Mr. Shinberg. Mr. Shinberg went and looked at it. And it's a hundred dollars to fix his driveway. Here's the quote here. And, uh, he said that he talked to you and he, and you said that the village was nothing about. Is this to seal the entire gravel? Well, you're gonna have to seal the whole entire driveway, cause the, the thing is thirteen feet back from the end of the sidewalk. Plus the grooves in the sidewalk are like five feet back. At the back hole, I mean. My phone's in the back there. I took a photo of it. The only, when I was there to talk with him, the only thing he pointed out was something that was within three feet of the driveway. It was about, yeah, it's about this long. Six and a half inches long and, and about half inch deep. I mean, we've done the damage, the village's, uh, back hole did the damage, and I think we should pay for it. Have it resealed. Yes. All, uh, I make a motion to pay for the one hundred dollars for the repair of the driveway. Okay? All favor?
Aye.
Uh, and I'd like to state that I talked to Susan the other day, the resolutions that, uh, we read here at the village board meeting on the fire department, the eight of them.
Yep.
And out of the eight of them, four of them were crooked. And she had the, the seal on the wrong side on one of them. We didn't have no frame for them. Our son went and bought frames, which I think is pretty cheap for the village to buy frames at the dollar store. For these people that got these resolutions, I mean, sixty-five years, fifty years, forty years, thirty-five years, stuff like that. I think it's an awful shame. And they use copy paper for the resolution and send a, a nice paper. That's the only paper we've got in the village office. Well, you should buy some other paper. I mean, that's ridiculous. Susan wasn't gonna do it. And I said, "Never mind, don't do it." I said, "I don't care." I said, "I'll have them done myself." But it's, it's a shame that the village, if you don't, if you think of the fire department the way that you think that, well, you probably better do not be here. She did repaint, uh, repress them and restamp them. Right, she did. She did do it, right. But it's an awful thing, like I said, to have a, a certificate like that just on regular copy paper. You couldn't went up to the border press and got some paper up there. They, they had it. So, does, so for future reference or order? Yeah, I, I would think so. I mean, it's only like, uh, probably eight dollars for a sheet of ten or something like that.
I mean, when all the other people give out resolutions and stuff, I mean, the, the frames and stuff like that look like they're a fifty dollar frame. You know, and we got some from the dollar store. That's, that's a shame.
That wasn't where we got, where we got the frames from.
And I had to buy one for myself, but they didn't, they didn't have enough of them. Just to let you know.
Okay. That wasn't where we got the frames from.
Well, whatever. And, what else? I guess that's it for now.
Did you get a chance to talk to the lady?
Oh, no, she wasn't, she wasn't there and stuff like that. I didn't get a chance. She was stepped out, I guess, or whatever, so. I'll talk to her tomorrow, and I'll leave a note in the basket or whatever.
Actually, this just reminded me through the... I'm gonna take the other side. Um, I spoke, I spoke with Adam about the stairs, but, uh, currently, because contract, if you're supposed to open the stairs, it's too, it's too busy for this year. The plan is to do it in the spring.
Right.
So that's the delay for that. We're just wondering, we're wondering if the funding would be able to pay to hold off for this time, because... It's supposed to be good until April. So we might have to do a thing where, like, we started before April, so the funding is still good. And I'll have to talk with Susan, because I only spoke with Adam last week on Friday. And she might be able to get extended again. We've been extending that for three years now? I'll call Adam. Okay, uh, requesting executive session, talk about persons.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Requesting executive investigation about an, or executive session about an investigation.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
And requesting executive session to talk to Adam.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Chris Felpe?
Yes, um, Trusty Arnold brought up last meeting about Eric Lilly. He passed his, uh, his test for his water plant. Um, now we have to do a motion to promote him from a trainee to a water plant operator. So, uh, Danny, the, the water superintendent passed that on today when I had a meeting with him. He would like us to formally put that into a form where he would get his, his title changed. I'll put that.
Sorry, any questions? Would this be a resolution for a whole though? I would think so.
Yeah, it has to do with money, so, yeah.
Yeah.
So he would go from a trainee, because he, he, uh, passed, he did his time, he passed his courses, and he had his health department meetings with the walkthrough, and everything was passed. So we have to bring him from a trainee to an operator. So those are benefits. So I'll put that in the form of a motion. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All vote? Oh, we don't have a resolution written in front of us, so. Again, it's kind of like the Harry McManus, renaming the path to Harry McManus, we don't have a resolution. And I'm not sure if a motion like this would be adequate. We gotta wait for another two weeks before we put him into that position. Yeah, it'd be back, it'd be, that's just retroactive, yes. Well, we can see if, but we can do it with just a motion. So I'll put it in the form of a motion if anyone wants it. All in favor?
Aye.
You sack anybody?
Aye.
And everyone says aye. And then if that's all that's needed, it's good, if we can do a resolution, then like you said, it'd be retroactive.
Yeah.
And then you got this certificate.
Okay, we had a meeting with PLM, they're an engineering outfit, and that's to the, that are gonna end up being our engineer for our electric system. So they are a member of the NEUA, part of our association, so we kinda get a break on, on the charges and, and costs. Right now, they're the engineers for Lake Placid and Upper Lake, or other municipalities just like us. They are currently doing the arc flash study for us. They're gonna do a system-wide study. And we had a meeting, myself, uh, Trusty Arnold, and the mayor, with, uh, Matt Donalds, and it went very well. I was very pleased at the end of the day that when we found out what, where, um, when we have questions, now we can pick up a phone, and we can ask if we're going in the right direction. So our electric system is very vital for our village, and we want to keep it that way. So we're just trying to keep a close eye on it. The other thing I have is, we had a water plant meeting with Martin LeDurus on Friday. There's an update on the ninety percent of the construction of our new water plant. Everybody has questions about this water plant, you know, the cost, and, and when it's gonna happen. But after talking with the engineers, what they're looking for, what we're looking for from the village, as the village arrived at this point, is to be shovel-ready, so when we do have to have a water plant, we're gonna be ready to go. They were talking years ago, when we started this, we're supposed to get a forty percent grant to pay for, and the village would have to bong the other sixty. Well, after talking with them, they're talking with, about, there's gonna be a lot of money available that's coming down the pipeline. And if you're shovel-ready, and you're ready to go, you'll be at the per top, you'll be the first one to be picked to go, to get these projects done. So when they're throwing this money, we'll be in good shape to, right, to have our new water plant. And hopefully, we'll keep the rates about where they are, and we'll be able to move forward with the new, new technology and what's available. So after the meeting, I ended up talking with the health department. He was, uh, I knew him from years ago when I worked for the village. And we're talking out in the parking lot after, and he said, Brian, he said, when they said forty, sixty, he says, I don't believe it. He says, I think it's gonna be the other way around. He said, the village might end up with sixty percent rent money, and forty percent that you have to pay. He said, that's how good he feels about this, this money that's coming from the state, and it's coming better. So hopefully, we'll end up with a new water plant, and we'll be in good shape, and maybe someday supply other communities with water, because we have capability and possible. So after that meeting, I thought it went very well.
Oh, yeah.
Because I was worried about, if we have all these plans, how long do they last? He said, you can put them on the shelf for a few years. He said, until the money is available, then you can go home.
Not only that, it's gonna be less expensive, because the materials for the building and stuff like that has gone down.
Everything is dropping back down.
Dropping back down.
Because of the materials, exactly. So they, we're in a good, we're in a good place, so.
You're wrong. Oh, sorry.
I, I just thought that meeting went very well also.
Yes. And it'll be, it'll be easier for operation costs as well, because you won't have to get DE anymore.
Right. And it wouldn't be, uh, manned twenty-four seven, it'd be automated, I mean...
Well, we're gonna be in a good place.
Okay. And if anyone has any questions, you can contact any one of the board members, and, you know, we'll show you the plans that we have, I mean, I'm very open. I have, uh, I'm retired, I know Trusty Arnold's retired. We'll sit down with anybody if they want to look at these plans and, and review of what's in the pipeline.
Yeah. We've got extra copies of the plan at the village office. And so any of the board members have a copy, I'll give my copy to Susan for the records. And here's this sheet. It'll be a nice little building, too.
Okay, one last thing, I need one executive session to talk about a particular community. One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yeah.
Other reports. Cooper?
Uh, Joe.
Oh, Joe, sorry.
Uh, I'd like to start with, uh, thanking the village employees for the job they did on the sidewalk out here. Did a really good job, and it was quick. Also, when we talk with the other board members, we would like to get certificates made for Kate Pan and Nancy Baker, they've been doing the flowers for the village.
I think that's a great idea.
Excellent idea.
I think all four of the ladies, is it four or six of them, could be recognized.
Yeah.
I got, that's two names I got right now.
Yeah, they've been doing it for years.
They're, I think they were...
For twenty-five years.
They were the first people that started.
Yeah.
But if you notice, if there's ladies out there, and they're out there early in the morning watering the flowers and weeding them, they're, I think they all need to recognize.
Yeah. So we'll get the other three names, or four names, whatever, and I think we should have a little uh, certificate form or something. I'll put that in the form of a motion. And you second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make something like a different form if you'd like.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's good.
All I got.
Yep. Okay, sorry about that. Um, any report, Cooper?
Just the regular reports, we're just taking care of complaints as usual, and of course, I'm gonna meet with you guys after the executive session.
Do you have anything official on the, on the place on Chapman Street? Any, uh, correspondence?
I haven't received anything.
Nothing for?
And I, what, I, I have asked the counsel, our counsel, several times for an update in what kind of, uh, legal action he has discussed with Dave Evercamp about what's going on. I have not received anything on that. I would, I would like to receive something, because I can, at the end of the month, I can give him like a few days, and then start, we can start actually taking him to court. But I need something from our lawyer to go forward with.
I think it's getting to the point where the village of Roswell Point has to do something for our community up there, I mean, the people have been, they've been six months at this. I've been talking to a few different public officials, and they're thinking that we should get ahold of Kimberly Davis from the treasurer, county treasurer, and ask her that if the village does take the responsibility for this building, to take it down, will put it on his taxes. I know they don't like to do the big commercial buildings anymore, but I was told that it's possible that they'll do the residential.
Oh, that's not...
So I'd like to check into that. I wanted to call Kimberly Davis and ask her to see if we can go forward on getting something done with this place on Chapman.
The only action I've got, is I emailed the date several times, and asked him to clean up, because the residents, the local residents on both sides asked me to do so. And I called them, they, they emailed me, actually, and I asked them if it had been cleaned up, because he promised me they'd do the outside perimeter, you know, cut the grass and all that, and I just told them no on Monday. On Tuesday, they emailed me back and said somebody had come up and mowed the lawn, and things, but that's not what we want. We want the mess fixed up and this darn thing taken down.
Well, now, now there's like animals, the raccoons.
Well, of course there is.
I mean, the winter's coming, so something has to be done.
Well, I'll say, just like the gentleman had it earlier, it's been six months. Something has to be done here.
Even if we have to get the health department involved, something's gotta be done.
Yes. I agree with you a hundred percent. I think that's something, but like I said, you know, our counselor here should be on top of this after six months.
I just wanna make sure that the village doesn't get stuck with the bill.
No, no, we'll make sure we go the right way.
Yeah. But, uh, depending on how, on the age of the building, if we have to do asbestos testing. And just...
Asbestos testing, I found out asbestos testing is not a big deal. You have Dana's come in, they'll do the sample, and they'll identify the areas. And as long as you're taking responsibility of the property, you can dispose it as a local land bill. That's what I think.
That's nice.
If they'll accept it, that's another thing.
Yeah, well. St. Mary's took so long to demolish because they can only take one truck load out a day. Because they, because they're concerned about asbestos at St. Mary's school. And the dump, the dump that would take the asbestos, asbestos is only accepted one more day.
Oh, we'll make sure we got a big truck.
Yeah. I mean, most of the building is brick, I mean... There should be people with asbestos. Any, any other report, man? Mr. Felpe, any other reports?
Nope.
Sorry, this is your first name, I don't have to remember what your last name is.
Darren. Darren.
Darren, okay. Uh, opening the meeting for the public again? Yep.
Just like to know if, uh, on Chapman Street, if you're allowing truck traffic to go through there, we're getting a lot of truck, trailer trucks on Chapman Street. I don't think that's the intention of that street, to draw trucks through there. It's been going on for quite a while. I don't know if they're not seeing their sign, or...
We'll have to check and see if the signs are still posted.
There is a...
It's by the way, the whole sentence, posted.
Not happening, they're going through.
They're from some chat.
We'll have to see if the signs are still posted.
If not, we can pass that on to the chair. Thank you. I've got one last thing, but I guess you're number two. At least, I've received a few questions about the goals for the signs in the rec center, for the skating rink, being assigned during COVID when I don't want to see it. Any thoughts on that? Would it wait until twenty twenty because of the rec center being closed and everything? Give them, give them a three years' result? Kind of a question we should have, that we should also have with our son here, but it's something to bring it up, I'd rather people stay in there and pay future, instead of them just getting angry and taking the signs out. It's good for the class for the next year. With our sons here. See how much it would cost just to wait for the fee, and see if they pay, see if they have to pay. Figure that out.
So did you talk to Mr. Kaufman about the sidewalk?
Yes, the sidewalk in front of that, that dome you just got, it's possible with the highway, the state highway guy. Uh, according to him, they're just gonna restore the sidewalk, and they're just gonna write that sidewalk section off as non-compliant. It's not really the optimal solution, because then it's not compliant for the crosswalk or a gate, but then at least people will just get the hell cops to go there. And that's part of what the state highway program is doing. I do track a lot of the stuff, I just have lots of other stuff going on, too. Yeah, it was a nice conversation with the highway department guy. Uh, a lot of the curbing is as it is, because New York State requires a six-inch clearance for the curves. So even though some of the curbing is a strip hazard, because you've got the sidewalk low, and you've got the road low, and you have a curve there, that is required by the state, the curvy six inches high. So they can't really do anything about that, and if they match the sidewalk to the curb, then they don't have ADA compliance with the crosswalks. It's, the downside of retroactively fitting a bunch of old sidewalks for modern standards is that you get wonderful things like that where curbs don't, don't match the sidewalk, sidewalk doesn't match the curb, it creates strip hazards. Eventually, it's a state thing, though, not our problem, eventually, the street will just have to be redone, so the curb, so the sidewalk can be redone, correct? But that won't be happening until they, until they finally decide to repave downtown. Which could be ten years, could be fifteen years. Don't know. It's not perfect, but that is what New York State Highway Bill requires. Okay, uh, motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we go into recess?
Not recessed, yes. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Good job. Thanks for listening. Take care of that one. There you go. Huh? John, please? Yeah.
Hi, Maggie.
Yeah. That shit off for you. And now I stop this.